Mr. Chairman.
Hi, I'd like to call in the calling to order the Conservation Commission meeting of October fifteenth at seven P M. Can I have the reporting secretary read the role call the role?
Yes, Commissioner Bashan.
Here.
Commissioner Conway.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Commissioner Peskowicz.
Here.
Commissioner Sedill.
Here.
Commissioner Womet.
Here.
Commissioner McCormick. Chairman Zelik.
Miss my position here today. Am I filling in today or not?
You are you are a panelist. You get the star, the badge, the whole thing. I need a motion to accept the minutes of the last the last scheduled meeting on seventeen.
Yeah, second.
And we're I'll call the vote. Anyone has everyone in approval of acceptance of minutes minutes you guys online?
Hi.
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 Yes.
Hi.
Good, we can move on. Okay. First thing in our so we're supposed to have a public hearing on application I W twenty four dash thirteen to construct a forty four unit residential project and associated infrastructure within the upland review area at two twenty Kits Lane, two twenty six Kits Lane, two twenty six Kits Lane rear and two forty four Kits Lane. The applicant contact is Patrick Snow, the owner is Kits Lane Apartments LLC. Do we have any public participation? Is anybody on of the public online? Good.
We have.
That's exactly what I want to hear. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, we do have a member of the public online.
We have a member of the public online and a member of the public present.
We are. Correct.
We're getting to that. Yes.
I have this place by agenda. Excuse me just a moment. I have access to the door.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Patrick Snow, part of Kits Lane Apartments LLC. I'm here tonight with my.
Mister Chairman, point of order, we need to review the public hearing from rare reminder or from the paper. We usually read in the the actual notice of public hearing before we begin.
Mister Commissioner Sedill is is correct.
He is correct.
Does the does Susan want to read this or do you want me to read it?
You can read it because I do not have it.
Okay. Newington Conservation Commission Notice of Public Hearing, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty four at seven P M. Notice is hereby given that the Newington Conservation Commission will hold a public hearing in the council chambers, room one oh three at Town Hall, two hundred Garfield Street, Newington, Connecticut, on Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty four, to consider the following petitions. Application I W dash twenty four dash thirteen to construct a forty four unit residential project and associated infrastructure within the upland review area at two twenty Kits Lane, two twenty six Kits Lane, two twenty six Kits Lane rear and two two forty four Kits Lane. Applicant contact is Patrick Snow, owner is Kits Lane Apartments LLC. This public hearing will be a Zoom webinar hybrid meeting. Information on how to attend will be posted on the town website at H T T P S backslash backslash W W Newington C T dot gov backslash virtual meeting schedule. These applications and related material are available for public inspection through the published agenda at the Conservation Commission Agenda Center. H T P P H T T P S backslash backslash W W W dot Newington C T dot gov backslash Agenda Center backslash Conservation Commission. Persons who require an accommodation to participate in this public hearing should contact the town engineer at eight six zero six six five eight five seven zero or engineering at Newington C T dot gov not less than twenty four hours before the public hearing submitted. Christopher is a video Newington Town Engineer, inland wetlands agent. And this ran in the rare reminder on October third and October tenth.
Start, Commissioner.
I believe you can now start. Yes.
For the for the record in the commission, my name is Patrick Snow. I'm the manager of Kits Lane Apartments LLC. I'm here tonight with our soil scientist Ian Cole and our engine my engineer Danielville. Mister Cole is on Zoom call. Just as a brief background, we started this development project probably about a year ago. And when we initially started with the town records, there showed no wetlands on this property. We since hired Mister Cole to go out and verify that and discover that there were indeed some wetlands on this property. We went for a wetlands map amendment, which was approved by this commission. I want to say six months ago, plus or minus. And then we since then have developed a plan around those those wetland areas and upland review areas. The development plan has stayed out of the wetlands itself and does encroach on the upland review area. As as we discovered, most of this property is in the upland review area. It's proposing forty four apartment units. And after that, with some of the particulars as far as drainage and wetlands, I think. Maybe I'll start with Mister Cole to give a quick overview and then we'll go to Mister Ville to go some of the particulars of the project. Mister Cole.
Sure. Good evening. For the record, Ian Cole, professional soil scientist of record for this application. As Mister Snow has stated, for the commission, if they remember, this site has the the wetland in the center of the property. As Mister Snow stated, there are no proposed activities which will directly impact the well and system. We've demonstrated that the proposed activities are not going to substantially change the the natural channel or inhibit the natural dynamics of the well and systems on site. The proposed activities are not going to diminish the natural capacity of the wetland. The site has provided a erosion sediment control and introduces a proposed stormwater treatment system, which I'm sure the engineer will go into more detail on. Again, I think we've demonstrated that this isolated well and feature is not anything of significance. And it's my understanding that the the town's third party reviewer tonight had submitted a a review document that I haven't had a tremendous amount of time to review, but the the general gist of it, my takeaway points were his review also demonstrated that the site was absent of any vernal pool habitat. He also concluded that the site similarly did not have any rare threatened endangered species or N D B habitat on the site, which I know is a concern of the commission dating back to some of the earlier meetings we've had. And lastly, that, you know, generally, there is the global perspective that the functions and values of the well and would not change. Outside of that, most of his kind of meant seem to be focused on stormwater aspects of the project and asking for some additional information related to those aspects. So with that, I guess I'll turn it back over to the project and the engineer.
Thank you, Ian.
Remote Commissioners, can you see my screen?
Yes, now I can.
Okay, great. As Pat mentioned, the site consists of forty four townhouse style apartment buildings, apartment units. We've distributed them throughout the site in a way to preserve the natural grading wherever possible. The sedimentation control measures are shown in the E N S plan, which you which you should have received. They are shown up gradient of all the wetlands and down gradient of the construction activities. No construction is proposed within the wetlands. The intent of the design is to maintain the overall drainage pattern of the site, which predominantly flows toward Kits Lane and into its drainage system. So the proposed drainage system, the proposed drainage system will collect runoff from the impervious areas created by pavement and buildings. That that runoff from those areas will be collected and and detained in underground infiltration systems, which I'll show in just a minute. And then ultimately discharge back into the Kits Lane storm system as the site does today. We'll incorporate also runoff from the roof leaders, which is which is excuse me, we'll incorporate the runoff from the roof leaders as well. And we'll detain that storm water to the predevelopment flows. Ultimately, the the discharges will be equal to or less than today's discharges at for the five, ten, twenty five, fifty and one hundred year storm return periods. Since we originally submitted this application, we have quantified in the plans, the wetlands area, the upland review area, disturbance within the upland review areas and the impervious areas. We supplied the updated plan sets to the commission. I'll just show those infiltration systems. We also added curtain drains up gradient of the buildings on the steep slope and level spreaders to offer recharge water to the the wetlands down gradient of the retaining wall and buildings. Also, the footing drains for these buildings, twenty five through twenty eight, will will discharge to those level spreaders. So the this the site's drainage system has two detention infiltration systems. They are they are perforated corrugated metal pipe and they have outlet structures that control the the discharge rates. We also, to answer a question from George Logan, will be permanently retaining the water quality volume. The the first flush storm of one point three inches is permanently retained on the site and infiltrated. We were also asked to provide for hydrodynamic separators. So I have specified hydrodynamic separators at three locations on this project and we will supply the the total suspended solid removal statistics in a in a later submission in our next submission. I think that's it.
And with that, we'll just conclude our our presentation, wait to get comments from public and address any open items, unless the commission has any questions for us at this time. You're hearing none.
I have nothing for you. Do you guys have any question?
No.
Anybody online have any questions for the applicant?
Not this time, no.
You have to come sit. You have to state your name, your address. The whole thing.
Mark, join me. Good afternoon. My name is Stacy Dennis. I'm concerned public here for the public hearing about conservation. Thank you for the presentation, Mister Snow, on how you plan to protect the wetlands. There are still several concerns that we're not properly protecting or conserving our wetlands. They span a large part of the property, so I'm confused trying to understand how you're actually preserving according to this map and being able to put forty four apartments in there while protecting the existing wetlands. I I don't think I clearly understood how the plan up there shows the wetlands. They're not flagged. They're not marked by the soil engineer that we've seen as a budding property owners. So there's a lot of concern. So we are here to formally state our objections.
You live uphill from this?
Yes, two fifty two. Nope.
Next property.
Next budding adjoining.
Right.
Yes.
Were you there on eight August on were you going up and down Kits Lane on eight August this year?
No, no. Oh, was I there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Did you go up and down the road? Did you go up and down Kits Lane?
It's go up and down Kits Lane.
Yes.
I would I'm guessing.
Okay, did you notice anything interesting during that storm?
During that.
The storm water is insufficient to handle the runoff.
Yeah, it was actually going over the road.
And it also affects Churchill Bridge. That storm water protection goes into a wetlands behind.
It's a point of order. Who is speaking right now? Name and address, please. Who's speaking? It's point of order for the minutes, please.
Mark Switohitz. I am the property owner of two fifty six Kits Lane.
Thank you.
The storm water.
I should have asked.
Also affects where it crosses a Berlin Turnpike. There's a flood plain in the rear of two six six one Berlin Turnpike, which is a commercial property, which also ties into Churchill Bridge that floods out. The water course coming off of two twenty six Kits Lane off the hill is inadequate to support even one inch of rain. There's not a storm that goes by that the town of Newington is in out there cleaning that storm system. Three, four days later, after a light storm, it is still bleeding off into the road.
So in addition, I'm just concerned because when you look out on the G I S maps and you look at the wetlands and how they span the property, it's not lining up what I'm seeing up there.
Oh, no, it it would only do that if you if you your P C was here and you hooked in you. We could we we'll take that for the record now.
Yes, please. I would appreciate it. The parcel that they're spanning is three acres and then there's a parcel in front. And the wetlands, as you can space, span both those parcels. So I don't know how we're protecting or conserving our wetlands with this plan. But I would be glad to give this. So we plan on formally objecting through the process and and following this all the way through and in hopes that we can conserve what little wetlands we have left. Section twenty two A dash thirty six. So really, if you look at the G I S maps, I'm not sure if you've done that. You know, when you see how it spans, what what you own the the whole way. Yeah, so I'm not sure how that plan covers this. So and then on top of it, we've had a soil test around there, but there's still flags that can be seen from anywhere for marking up the wetlands.
I can attest personally to the wetlands flags as shown on the plan.
Yes.
I've been to the property.
Yeah, did they disappear?
No, they're there. They were there Thursday.
Oh, well, of course, we we didn't trespass, but.
I did.
Yeah. I don't think it counts as trespassing if you do. So anyways, yeah, and I'm just wondering how it lines up with this map. So not sure what else we can do as a concerned.
What's the source of your map?
The Newington G G I S maps. Yeah, you can do the wetlands and, you know, the crosshatch shows you the wetlands. So it's a very large area and the parcel is very small. So I just can't see how even if the sediment control is going to protect this in such a confined area. Thank you for allowing us to speak. Any questions for us? No?
Not at this time, no, but thank you for coming. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for letting us.
It's really important because we got to get neighbors.
Have one. Bring one home to Mark.
Yeah, cookies. Take the cookie. Yeah, no, take the cookies. No, just take one. Somebody wants a cookie. Come on. I went to a lot of trouble there.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming in.
Another member of the public director addressed the commitment in regards to this application.
Anyone online?
Could you repeat that question?
We were asking if any one, any other members of the public wanted to address the commission or if there was anyone online.
There are two public members online, but I don't see their hands raised.
I only see four boxes. I only see four boxes. Are they there?
Well, they didn't get a picture. That's our commissioners.
Right.
So I, like I said, I don't I don't think they would get to be displayed on the screen unless they're speaking. But they don't have their hands raised, so I presume that they don't have anything to say to add to this. And just to speak again for the record, you're on.
Patrick Snow, manager of Kits Lane Apartments LLC and.
Danielville, professional engineer, Zubik Inc.
And address the question of how preserving the wetlands. So just as another brief history, when we first started this project, we did aerial survey and there were no wetlands on located on the property. We since hired Mister Cole to go out and mark the wetlands and obtained a wetland map amendment, which is shown on the up there screen. That star picture in the middle is the area of wetlands that's located on the property.
Let's take a minute. I'll I'll show the approved map. So the approved. Let's see, this is the wetland map as approved by the commission in their letter dated November twenty second, two thousand twenty three, I think. Yep, and so this is the this is the wetland as accepted by this commission at that time.
And after after accepting those areas as wetlands, we've then designed the site around those wetlands to preserve them for the long term and not to interfere with them with this with this development. I believe that was the the crux of the questions that I heard and then to not over you Dan.
So there were I I heard two primary concerns. One was protecting the wetlands. So we've we've protected the wetlands during construction using silt fence, erosion control fence. And post construction, there was a concern about storm water. The storm water flows off this site will be detained in underground structures so that there the discharge rates post construction do not exceed the existing condition. And I can I can refer the commissioners to the the drainage report that was submitted. That should be in the record if if anybody wants to see it. But the idea of that, the idea of the system is that the hundred year storm discharges at exactly the same rate post construction as it does preconstruction. We do this by detaining the water temporarily in underground structures and discharging through a series of orifices to control the flow rate.
Mister Cole, would you like to add anything? Here we know he's.
You know what? I missed I missed one thing. So I mentioned before, post construction, we will supply water to the wetlands by collecting the runoff from this slope and the groundwater behind these buildings and discharging it just upgrading of the wetlands to to ensure their continued supply.
Public allowed to ask questions to this rebuttal or?
Yes.
How so you're planning to pump water? So you've got roadways blocking the wetlands and you're going to pump water into that and preserve them that way?
The the water all flows by gravity. There's no pump. So just anywhere that the flow is interrupted by an impervious surface will provide a place for it to pass and be redistributed.
So that's a roadway, though, correct?
The the roadway is here. Yeah.
Yeah.
And so there are pipes that cross under the road to allow the water to flow under the road and then be distributed across.
And how did you come up with these calculations? From the storm water coming off the hill from Lenox.
So we use something called the rational method, which is described in the Connecticut D O T Drainage Manual and the and the Stormwater Quality Manual. The the runoff, sorry, the rainfall data comes from NOAA's Atlas fourteen and it describes various storms for certain durations and return periods. For example, the hundred year storm is what we is what we size up to.
And how did you get the calculations from this particular site, not from a book?
So the Atlas fourteen describes the average rainfall for the town of Newington and we apply it to the site. We average slopes and topography, soil types and ground cover such as vegetation and impervious impervious areas. I can show hydraulic analysis if you like. These are these are the these are the various catchment areas in the proposed condition. They're impervious portions. We we add these catchments to a computer model that tells us exactly how much will run off into catch basins. We calculate the travel times through the pipe networks. I can show the discharge rates.
System on Kits Lane that handled the capacity.
So I'll let me find a hydrograph for you so I can explain. So the green line represents a predevelopment discharge from the site onto Kits Lane. So the idea is water running off the site right now flows onto Kits Lane and there's a maximum flow rate in cubic feet per second. The discharge from our system, the detained discharge from our system is the red line and the undetained discharge from our system is the blue line. So the idea here is that red plus blue never exceeds the green, right? We never discharge faster than the site today does.
How many gallons can your system hold?
The detention volume of the northern structure is six thousand cubic feet and.
The complete, complete full.
So the sum of these, about sixteen thousand cubic feet.
Seventeen thousand cubic feet.
Yep.
And what would be this? At what point will it be discharged on the Kits Lane? How much flow is that?
So the the discharge point is this catch basin here, which is just southeast of the the Aldi parking lot entrance today. And the discharge rates, let's see. Discharge rates. The discharge rate for the hundred year storm in the existing condition is five cubic feet per second. And in the proposed condition, the discharge rate will be reduced to four point nine four cubic feet per second maximum. And that's for the hundred year storm. A more typical storm, the twenty five year storm, which is, I think, what we're required to convey by the current standards in the town of Newington is three point eight two, which is also a reduction from the current four point oh six.
The culvert that cuts through all these that crosses a Berlin Turnpike into Churchill Bridge cannot handle that capacity from what you just said. This warm pipes coming down that road going to a culvert. Prior to all these being built, they jacked the culvert into the road. It cannot handle the capacity now. It cannot handle the capacity now as it sits. So you're telling me you're gonna increase it, add to it. It can't handle it now.
We're going to reduce it. Actually, the numbers show.
The system that the quantities don't match up. Your seventeen thousand gallon volume.
Seventeen thousand cubic feet, actually.
Seventeen thousand cubic feet. And you think that's adequate enough?
Uh, I, I do think that that's adequate. I can show the, um.
The culvert that these pipes and this discharge is gonna go in and into cannot handle that bottom. It can't handle any more increase than it already is now. It can't handle. You go out on Pitts Lane on a one-inch storm, half-inch storm, it's underwater. Both sides of the road and Aldis. That culvert is undersized. So a hundred-year storm, twenty-five-year storm has to be recalculated. The way the weather changes and the world is going, we're, Kits Lane is a flood out once or twice a year. Now it's happening every week when it rains. It hasn't rained in quite a while. You should go out there next time it rains. Well, public works. They'll let you know.
Commissioner, we, we presented, uh, engineering data and other items and we've heard from them, uh, as far as just the, there's statements that they say it doesn't work. We, we cannot say that it does or doesn't work. Um, we're saying we're reducing, reducing our
Contribution.
Contribution to that, uh, storm drainage system. If it's inadequate today, that's, uh, something that we really can't address at this point. And I don't know that that's indeed a true statement or not. Um, I'm not disagreeing with you that there's water there, but I haven't heard, uh, that there's been any kind of engineer or any reports that, that state that that is the case. So that's just our, you know, we, we've got the data, we've got the backup, we've done our calculations on this and we, we know that we are reducing the flow from where we are today.
So your, your central position is, uh, uh, you will, you will reduce the flow.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
We're gonna improve this current situation.
That does not contest his contention that the, uh, flow now was, you know, overwhelming the culvert.
Cor- correct. We can't, I can't comment to that. That's not something where.
That's an existing feature that is not being impacted by, uh, you know.
Not negatively impacted by our development.
Yeah.
That's correct.
As a Connecticut DOT agent informed that culvert crosses their water.
Who owns that culvert?
I can look into that. I don't know.
Yeah, that would be interesting. I, does DOT own culverts or is that?
They would own a culvert that goes under their roads, such as a Verona Turnpike.
Oh, is that?
Typically what happens is it's ours going to the state highway line.
Right. And then.
And then it's theirs. And then on the other side of the highway, it's ours.
I just wanted to be known that there's been.
As it is right now. The problem exists, you know, without their proposed development. It's there. They may be said to be mitigating it some, but you know, it's not their job to correct the problem. I wouldn't think.
However, they're looking to build forty-four apartments and on a piece of property that's largely wetlands that hasn't been contributing to that issue. So in, in addition to the, the storm problem, I really do need to circle back. I mean, the reason we're here is to preserve our wetlands. We're not doing that. According to section two, twenty-two, thirty-six A, when I look at this, oh, the purpose of what we're doing with our legislation is to preserve our wetlands, not build structures that are gonna impede the water flows them. I hardly think building a road around the entire wetlands with some pipes to let water through or protecting. You've got forty-four apartments going in and around them. How is that protecting your wetlands? I have the excerpt. I don't wanna bore everybody with reading the legislation, but I would like to, to call the property owners' attention to that. Twenty-two A thirty-six, I'm not sure if you've familiarized yourself with that, but you're not. You're impeding. You are with everything you're doing. You've got a, a road built around them. Going in and, and, and changing the paths and whatnot. It, it's not, we're not maintaining. We're not preventing. Not at all with your design.
Uh, we appreciate your input and, um, I, I would, uh, disagree with that, that we are indeed, uh, preserving the wetlands. Um, that we are not doing anything to limit water flow through them. We're not doing anything to limit their, uh, existence, um, from the prior testimony as well. And, and in our, our wetlands report, they're not a high-functioning wetland. Um, I'm not saying they're not a wetland. It definitely are a wetland, but it's not a high-functioning wetland. There are different categories of wetlands. Um, and, you know, that, that's what people do. I, I would disagree with your statement, but I take it and I will review, uh, what you've presented.
We're supposed to minimize the disturbance pollution, improving water quality, preventing structures and filth from coming in. And we're gonna fill that roadway. You're gonna be drinking filling. I know you're gonna put up a silt fence, but if you're bringing in fill, currently the water flows naturally through. You're bringing in fill, which how deep do you have to put, put your fill, build this road in? And what kind of fill? You're putting all of that fill all around the entire wetlands. So how is that protected? I know you disagree with my statements, but currently there's nothing competing to flow into those wetland areas. Now you're putting a whole roadway around the whole thing. How, how deep does fill have to be to put a roadway in? And you're gonna put a pipe there and you think that's gonna preserve them? No, no. So.
Didn't address the roadway.
We plan on continuing. Um, thank you for letting us, uh, attend the public hearing. I mean, I just, I just can't believe that you would propose such a design. Fill is one of the big things right in here. So in addition to all the storm drain and, and, and runoff issues, um, me personally, that's my largest concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Other problem?
May I? I don't even know how protocol is here, but is there a, a discrepancy between that map and what we're seeing up there in terms of the, the, the wetlands? Is that what I'm hearing?
And you wanna address that quickly? I mean, Ian put it, he chimes in, but I haven't heard from him. I'm not sure it's audio.
I haven't, I haven't seen the GIS map in question, but my guess is that it hasn't been updated since the commission made their ruling on the presence of wetlands in this site.
Weather map.
Right. The, the wetland map amendment has likely not been entered into the GIS, maybe?
Oh, I believe that. We haven't had a GIS technician since. So our IT guy does it where he has.
According to their design though, their roadway goes around, if, if they're saying this is the new wetlands area. How we changed that so easily, but, um, so the new wetlands area is surrounded by a road entirely. If you show your design in that, I mean, what you've laid out for the wetlands, roadway is almost touching, pardon. So still whether the GIS map is a hundred percent accurate or not, it's a good point. But thank you for noticing.
Well, I just, I don't, I'm trying. This is my second meeting, so I have a lot to learn. Thank you. So.
We have, um, I'm, do you remember what meeting we had where you, I know, I remember the meeting where you combined the two properties. But I don't remember changing the wetland parameters. Do you remember what meeting that was? So I can look back at it.
Yeah, one second. According to the letter dated November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, uh, the meeting took place on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three and that the effective date of the map amendment was December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Thanks. I just, I'm gonna take a look at that. I, I don't remember. I, I remember you. I remember the two parcels being merged. There's two parcels originally. I don't remember anything more than that. I, you know, I was like, what's he doing here?
Were there a number of meetings that took place prior to that, that built up to that final approval?
Yeah, there were two meetings prior to that.
Two meetings. Were they public hearings or public meetings? Do you remember?
Uh, we had.
Public hearing.
Yeah, one public hearing.
Okay.
There were no public comments or opposition to the map amendment, according to the letter.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, please.
Um, is, is, is Mr. Logan gonna speak tonight or what is the status of his environmental reviewer? Was he gonna speak tonight? Is that gonna be all presented or is this still a work in progress?
It's still a work in progress, correct?
Yes. But I have information that I can present tonight. This is George Logan, Re-Mechanical Services for the Record. I am a registered soil scientist. I am a professional wetland scientist, certified senior ecologist. And I do have a master's degree, which is in conservation biology, wildlife management. Um, what I've done today, and this is sort of a two-parter. Um, typically when I do these, these third-party reviewers, I generate a, a bunch of questions that I might have not found the information yet and it might be best for the applicant to provide the information, or there might be additional information that is necessary for me to finish the review and to be able to have sort of a fair, um, review, um, on all the matters and then be able to make recommendations to this commission based on the final packet. So what I've done, I mean, some of the, these things are things that I also talked about, I think, the last time, but I now have them in writing. Uh, so today I produced a, what I'm calling a preliminary review. Um, and what I've done is I've done, I've done sort of a step-by-step thorough evaluation of the application based on categories that for the most part, ninety-five percent of it applied to this commission. There's some other environmental stuff there that, um, might not be directly applicable, such as, is there a critical habitat here? Is there a trap rock habitat? That's not necessarily something that this commission, um, typically looks at as a wetlands commission, but you might, might look at as obviously as a conservation commission. So you have a dual role there, uh, as, if that is concerned and one informs the other, right? So what I've done is I have, um, an, a wetlands application review tool or form that I used. That's eleven pages. At least that's what it ended up being. What I do is I consecutively, uh, step-by-step go through all the, the various, uh, elements of the application. I'm looking at existing conditions, you know, what's, what's going on with the wetlands, the functions and values, the soils, the geology. And then I start going into figuring out if information that's pertinent to, uh, the commission making an informed decision and the supplication of that information is in the application. And if it's not, I ask some questions for the applicant to be able to provide this information. For the most part, most of this information has been provided. Um, so for instance, I have information on soils. And, you know, we've, I've gone through asking questions such as, does the application include hydrologic soils groups map? Yes, it does. It's part of the hydraulic analysis. Um, do the onsite soils contain a hardpan? Why is that important? Yes, it does. The weather's feel so serious out of, from compact substratum or hardpan at a depth of about twenty-six inches. And that's kind of an example of some of the information. I look at the wetland delineations and ask some questions there. Uh, for the most part, as I've said before, there is no issues with the wetland delineation was correctly done. Uh, if, if any, it might be slightly conservative in some areas because it's very difficult to determine, um, these wetlands because it's very difficult to dig within some portions of it, especially the ones that start climbing up the hill. So you're making interpretation based not only on to the extent that you can look at soils, you're looking at vegetation, you're looking at apparent hydrology and making determination uh, as to the weapon. And I think for the most part, that's been done, uh, expertly. There was one little area that's about three hundred square feet that we could argue about, but I looked at it carefully and it's not within an area that's anything is being proposed. So it's, it's safe, if you will. Um, and then I looked at the information that was provided, uh, as far as the wetland habitat description of them. Oh, by the way, it's interesting. Yes, the, the official wetlands map of, of the town did not originally have this wetland. Interestingly enough, the National Wetlands Inventory Map
Did.
Did.
Right.
Which is unusual because it's so small. So I don't know what the interpreter was seeing. Maybe they saw some picture and saw some wetness and figured there was something there. Um, I looked at functions and values. I think the methodology that was used is proper. There are several methodologies you can use. The ones that uh, Mr. Cole used is the one that most of us use when we do our evaluations. Um, it's, it's somewhat, somewhat conclusionary, which means usually if you really wanna get a little more specific, what you do is you look at the rationales for each one of these functions or values that the Army Corps of Engineers and their methodology is this, the descriptive methods has provided. You basically go out and check all these or make notes on all these things and there's a form that you can fill in. But at any rate, um, my professional opinion is that the table that Mr. Cole provided in his, whether, uh, function or value was principal or secondary or not, appreciably there for the most part is correct, except I had a little, um, thing which is probably subjective for everyone is that is the, uh, visual quality aesthetics of the wetland, which is a value because, you know, we as humanity derive pleasure from that. And the only question that I would have in some of these back portions of the wetland that are much less impacted or not impacted at all. So if you think of this wetland, um, about a third, maybe close to a half, has been disturbed uh, to a great extent in the past. And that's the area that's more in the flats. Uh, then you have these, uh, slope wetlands that go up, which are groundwater discharge wetlands, and those are not too bad. They're more pristine and they have more function. So if someone looked at those wetlands during a very narrow period of time, which is about a month in the spring, you might be able to see if there was an abundance of spring ephemerals and the biodiversity might go up. So those might have, you know, when the spring ephemerals come out, some of these wetlands are very aesthetically pleasing, but also goes to the biodiversity. Uh, there are no ponds or lakes. There are no perennial watercourses. There are no headwater streams. Uh, there is no vernal pool, as far as I can tell. And like, the reason for, of course, I haven't been there during the spring. Mr. Cole has been there and he comes back and reports that there were no oblique vernal pool species like wood frogs, for instance. And believe it or not, the time that I did my, my inventories, which was two times and the last one was Thursday, as you recall, um, one of the things that I look at, if I suspect that something is a vernal pool this time of the year, when I can't see any water, I can't see any egg masses, I can't see any activity, what I look for is wood frogs. So wood frog is sort of a, a keystone species for these vernal pools. And this time of the year, they're hopping. The neomorphs, the new of the year are hopping all over. Um, this is the high-activity month, the beginning of it, when the temperature is a little better in the morning. And if you see them, then, oh, there must be a vernal pool around, but I didn't see any. And I spent probably a bad part of three hours, three, three and a half hours on the site cumulatively and none were, none were found. Uh, I saw a piliery woodpecker, but that's not a wetland species. Um, I looked at then the site, part two of my review form was looking at the application. So looking at the plans, going deep, looking at the hydraulic analyses with a caveat, I'm not an engineer, I'm a scientist. So you, I have to kind of look at some things with my scientific eye, if you will, and see if there are particular elements that, um, show me that this, from an engineering perspective, and especially from a water quality perspective, that the application is complying with the, the new some water quality manual, the DEP, which was put out in two thousand and twenty-three and became active in March. And that's where some of these questions have come up. Um, I'm not gonna go into any greek detail here, but I have a series of questions and comments which. but I have a series of questions and comments, which the engineer, I'm sure, will go through, and he will more or less quickly be able to answer some of these things, basically get into the weeds, which I have, and as far as the calculations and the hydraulic analysis, and maybe be able to provide this kind of information. What I told you the last time was that when you come to figure out impacts to wetlands, there are several categories. Some of them are short-term, some of them are long-term, and some have to do with direct impact. So if this is a wetland and you're filling it, well, that's an impact. There's no direct wetland impact proposed, so that we can push aside. Then there are indirect physical impacts, and that's what the courts have said that you need to look at. So categories would be under short term. Look at erosion, sanitation control, what the risk would be to this wetland from the construction that's surrounding it. And it's obvious that it's surrounding it. The soils here are fine textured, so that creates a little bit of a problem, which means we have to be a little bit more careful and put into place erosion, sanitation controls that will take care of that. The amount of fill that's being placed in certain areas, the fine texture, the slopes, all those things have to be considered. And I made a recommendation, at least preliminarily, to use not only silt fence, which for the most part is something that we all use, and it's good if properly installed, which doesn't always happen, improperly maintained. And then the issue is that the column silt fence is, and this is sort of my way of looking at it, because they pass through silt. 70% TSS removal is what a good silt fence will do. So 30% of the, especially the fine fraction, goes through. If it didn't, water would never pass through, it would just pond behind it. So in order to achieve in these kinds of soils a better effective attenuation, what I usually do is, you know, I usually say is, okay, you can do it twice. Here's your silt fence, what you wanted to, either in front of it or behind it, is put a silt sock. And silt socks are, that's a general term, are tubes, and they come in different sizes. Usually you want to do something that's at least eight to 10 inches. They come in bigger sizes, and they can be filled with a variety of products. The ones that I like is either compost or very finely shredded wood product. You don't want to put something that's coarse, because the reason for the silt sock is for you to be able to get more of the silt out and to also protect the integrity of the silt fence also. So I've made some of those recommendations in there. But coming back to the physical impact, so the next one would be water quality. Now, what's happening here, for the most part, is that a lot of this impervious surfaces are now being directed towards the wetland. Right? So from the impervious surfaces that have traffic, that's maintained in a closed system, stormwater management system, and it's being taken care of by certain structures. And that's another category that I'll speak to in a moment. So water quality is not as much of an issue to this wetland for post-construction. I'm more concerned about it during construction, which is why these W erosion, sanitation controls might be part of the solution. The water quantity issue is one that I'm more concerned, because as Mr. Cole has said in his report, this is a gronder, it has components of groundwater discharge wetlands. These slope wetlands, so you have a steep slope, it relaxes, and usually what happens in these till situations with a harpan is the water breaks out when you get to the bottom of the slope, and voila, you have a wetland. And you can see this wetland has these two appendages that go up the hill that are waters discharging, and then it's coming down to the bottom of the wetland. So an effort has been made, and maybe some reconsiderations has to happen is to make sure that we're not denying hydrology to the wetland. And that's not something that you look at from a perspective of the analysis that was done or stormwater management in general, because what the engineer is looking at is what's going to go off at the end of the site, not what's going to necessarily go into the wetland, which is part of it. So what has happened here is that one of the things, I think is probably an issue that the commission had recognized, that hydrology of this wetland is important. If we don't maintain it, we don't have a wetland. We'll de-water it. It's going to dry up. If it dries up, some bad things can happen to the wetland itself. So one of the things they've done is they've put this French trench, French drain or collection trench on the upside of the bigger building that's up on the higher portion of the site. It's pretty deep. As far as I saw in the plans, it goes, it can go up to four or five feet deep. And basically, it wicks all the groundwater, and it passes it around, and there's two level spreaders. By the way, I'd like a detail for the lever spreader. I did put that here, that we're good. And that level spreader then passes the water back to the wetland. However, the next analysis that I'm proposing, that's good. I mean, that's obviously something that had to be done, is to look at something akin to a water budget for the wetland. Without getting into too much detail what that means, one of the first elements would be to look at the drainage areas to this wetland. And because we have till that brings water down to this wetland, by doing a watershed analysis, it's pretty close to basically what's happening there. If it was an outwash deposit, it'd be something different. So what I'm asking, and this is in the cover letter, if you will, of my preliminary review, is to provide mapping that shows the pre and then the post catchment areas or watersheds to the wetland, the upper portion of the wetland. And I defined it by saying, here's one wetland flag. So here's the edge of one watershed line, if you will, and here's another one. And I defined that as being wetland flag seven and 15, because that's where the water's coming to. So what I like to do is to do a comparison of pre and post and see what the difference is. That will give us a number. It will say, well, we have a 10% reduction. Is that significant, or isn't it? It might not be significant. And if it's not significant enough, because this is a through-flow system, then it might not be, I might not say, okay, there might be an impact here. So those are the kinds of things that I was looking for. The other thing that I was interested in is because we have a manual, this is the stormwater quality manual, that has certain standards. And so for new development, what the state is telling us all, commission included, town staff, is that we should do the best that we can. This is say, you know, if we don't do it exactly, they're going to bring the handcuffs to lock us up and throw us away, and they have some, they base the best, you know, they'd save it to the extent achievable, to the best, you know, most achievable. So we do what we can, if it's possible. This has some standards, and one of the standards is that you figure out what your water quality volume is, which is the runoff this generator by a 1.3-inch storm off your catchment areas, your impervious and non-impervious surfaces. And that's a water quality volume, and you want to take this and put it into the ground. And if you can put all of it into the ground, then the state makes the assumption that you've done the best that you possibly can as far as water quality value. I'm sorry, it's a water quality attenuation. And if you can't put all of it in, and whatever's left, you have to attenuate with other practices, you know, detention basins with vegetation, et cetera. They have standards. They say you want, they want 90% TSS removal on an annual basis from your stormwater runoff. They want 60% of your total phosphorus and 40% of your total nitrogen. So if you can't put the water in the ground, then you have to deal with those metrics. But if you can't put your water into the ground, you have to worry about it. Thank you very much. So as a scientist, I have a little problem with that, because there are some situations where you would want to use vegetation, and just infiltrating doesn't always work, but, okay, that's what the state says. And there's another, there are other standards. And so what I've done is I've asked for the look at those standards, and the majority of my comments on two standards. The first one is called runoff volume and pollutant reduction. And that's the infiltrating the water quality volume. The second one is called runoff quantity control, and that's a different situation. And basically, it's sort of an over-control of your runoff. And the reason for that is make sure you don't have downstream issues, because the problem is not always the runoff rate. It can also be the runoff volume, because you're always going to generate more volume unless you're able to put it into the ground that runs off from the site. The rate is good, because you don't want, like the gentleman was talking about here, is that pipe cross-cover from the catch basin big enough to take the rate? Obviously, it must not be taking the rate correctly today, so it's maybe the town's problem, maybe not. Maybe it's the state's problem. But there's volume, and the volume means you get a, because you have impervious surfaces, unless you can infiltrate it, you generate a volume. So that means that pipe will run for a longer period of time at a specific grade. Volume can be a problem down gradient. So this standard number two, which is an over-control, allows you to do something about the volume. So other portions of this form did not have anything to do with, there's no mitigation that's being proposed for direct wetland impact. So typically, what happens, if you fill some wetland, you create some wetland. But that's not something that's being proposed here. Now, there might be some need, and that's going to come out in my final report as I bring all this information that hopefully I'll get in the next two days. Just kidding. We have a lot of time. And then finish the final report, which will have recommendations to the commission, and be able to say, well, on a zero to 10, where is this on this issue? Where is this on, you know, this issue, et cetera? So you folks can make a decision as to whether the indirect impacts are significant or not. But as far as mitigation is concerned, there might be some enhancements that can be had of the wetland itself. One of the things that was noticed by me and by Mr. Cole, which also points back to the fact that this wetland has been disturbed in part, is you have a very bad infestation happening of Japanese knotweed. That's very difficult to control, but if there is development that's happening here, and there's the means and the ways to control Japanese knotweed, that this would be the time to do it, because if you don't do it, it's just going to spread. It's going to take as much of the wetland as possible. Now, not the shaded wetland, but the partially shaded wetland, which is what's happening right now. So why am I saying that? Because as you come close to the wetland with your development and cut the trees, you're creating a partial shading along the edges of the wetlands. And that's the perfect area for Japanese knotweed to proliferate, if it can. So an invasive management plan is part of mitigation for indirect impacts might not be a bad idea, and that's something that we can, I float out there for Ian and company to consider, and I'll probably speak a little more about it in my final review report, once I get the information. That's in a nutshell what I've done so far, and so you folks can go through it. You can see the questions have been asked. One thing that I would have wished was more, was more information. I've done what I can, and I'll provide a little more of a floristic inventory, is exactly that. There is some information on mostly the shrub stratum in the report, but typically, what I like to do is to provide an inventory form that provides as much of the vegetative character as possible, because the vegetation is part of the habitat, which also correlates to the function of the wetland. So if you have a portion of the wetland, which you do, which is compromised as far as vegetation is concerned, then, okay, that's one. But there might be other portions that are not. So you might want to do a more robust inventory to be able to identify portions of the wetland that might be more worthy of protection over the long run in the post-construction, which means you might be able to do certain things to protect those areas, like vegetative enhancement along the edges of the wetlands, say. Because one of the things that you folks probably have heard that happens, and I just mentioned it with the Japanese knotweed, is when you come close to the wetland and you don't have a significant buffer, which you don't have in this particular case. You have 15 feet in some cases, maybe a little more in others. You bring that disturbance edge closer to the wetland, and it has an effect into the wetland, because you start to invite invasive species. We talked about Japanese knotweed, but there's others. There's multiflora roses, morros honeysuckle, Japanese barberry, and so on. Not so much the latter. So sometimes what we do is we provide, and if we can't provide more buffer, so it's always a better idea, is to provide some vegetative enhancement where we're coming close to the wetlands. So that's all I have to contribute at this point, and...
When do you expect to have the completed report?
I would say that once the answers to my questions land in my lap, that it will be within a week.
Okay.
So say if it's a week and a half from now, then a week later. So a week to a week and a half before the next meeting, which would be?
November 19th, if I recall.
Okay. You have any other questions of me, anyone?
I have some questions. John Bishant here?
Yes.
Hi, George. Thank you for that excellent presentation. You're always educating us, not just on this application, but there's always some extra stuff in there to take away.
Okay, thank you.
My concern is, and it seems like the emphasis is on not denying the wetland, the water resource. My concern is it being inundated in one of these five-inch rainstorms and physically changing the characteristics of the, you know, the physical wetland, just inundating it and filling it or just changing it in general. So my concern is not that it's not going to get enough water. My concern that it's going to get inundated, especially with the, all the extra impervious surfaces to the east uphill, upgradient. So is there anything you could speak to that? Are my concerns warranted or not?
I think what I would say is that I need to take a little closer look at that. I was concentrating mostly on denying it water, like you heard, because it is a through-flow system. So what I would need to do is to kind of figure out what's happening in the wetland as it's acting as a detention basin, if you will, by itself. So what's happening at the outlet? Right? So I'll take a look at that and see if I can come back. Ideally, you don't want to dam it, if you will, and
And fill it up.
Have fill it up. So if they kept the natural invert, which I think they have, at about the same, I don't think it's going to be being inundated more, because again, it's a through-flow system. It's not, you know, it's not a pond, it's not a semi-permanently flooded wetland. It's... barely seasonally flooded, is, you know, there's one area that's, that's flooded.
But it is serving the, the basic function of a wetland, which is to store stormwater for some period of time at least, correct?
It does, yes. And then has that outlet little channel, which was not characterized as an, in mid-water course, and I would agree with that, actually.
So I, I gather that it's not an endangered species habitat, but it is a habitat and, and I am concerned about the physical characteristic of that change.
Yeah. So let me, let me put a little more light on, is it not an endangered species habitat? It's not likely. Right? It's not likely an endangered species habitat. I can't tell you whether it is or not. What I can tell you is that the
No Siberian tigers there.
Yeah, I didn't see one, you know, and if I did, I'd be still running. There is wildlife there, obviously. Unfortunately, I've not been there through the seasons to see what the wildlife would be, except for the pelirhea woodpecker. And other cosmopolitan species, you know, like the jays that were crying at me because they weren't happy with me in the Carolina Ren. I think we heard the Carolina Ren. And we did see a fox. Within, he didn't seem to be very concerned, he or she or it. Did not seem to be very concerned, just sat down and looked at us. Any rate, where was I going with this? But the problem is that in this kind of habitat, which is infused by by trap, has a trap rock influence. And if you looked at the geological maps, what it shows, which kind of speaks of that, of maybe some trap rock influence, obviously it's in the area. The, the superficial geology map shows a band, which is the steep slope that calls a talus slope. Technically, it's not very characteristic of a talus slope, but there is a little bit of it. So forget the uplands, but as far as the wetlands are concerned, if they're being infused by groundwater that has certain chemical characteristics that are trap like, 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 trap like, trap rock like, I'll get this out, which means that a little more basic basic, not as acidic, you might have a different complement of, of species, floristic species within the wetland itself, especially ephemeral species, which again, there are some that we know are listed.
You're talking about like a mineral bleed from the, from the rock?
A mineral bleed, you know, probably high magnesium, high calcium and, and sort of more of a basic situation is possible. So that's sometimes. I mean, I did see some Duchess breaches up in the upland, which is characteristic of that kind of thing, but there might be other species like squirrel corn. You know, things that are, that are listed.
I know you said there was no, I, I, I said, I know you mentioned previously that there was no swamp cottonwood, so.
There is no swamp cottonwood.
So I, I just look at those, those extreme topo lines and that's what's got me concerned, like what would happen in a, you know, we had a five inch rainstorm and five inches in two hours, whatever it was. Newtown had what 12 inches or something like that? So this stormwater retention system, the hundred and, I think I calculated it to 120,000 gallons of storage. What would it take to overwhelm that? I mean, I know we go, we're going, we're using the hundred year events, but would that five inch storm have overwhelmed that completely?
That's probably more of an engineering question, but if you look at the information Noah provides, they don't stop at the hundred year storm. They do the 200, the 500 year, the 1,000. I think they stop at 1,000. And if they knew what happened in Oxford, they'd probably put the 2,000.
Yeah, there you go. So.
But again, that's an engineering question. That's what I'm focused on is whatever's happening from a water quantity perspective on the site is that having an effect one way or another, now that you've mentioned the other way to the wetland. So I'll take a look on the reverse part, which is not de-watering it, but flooding it out and changing characteristics that way.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
But then to her, her concern about the fill in the road, just on that, was it the east end? So that you, so there may be a concern that is a good concern, it would be that the chemical, you know, composition of the fill there. Would that be something you concerned about it there?
That's a question that I actually put down as I was listening. Let's see, what did I say here? Oops. Nope, I'm in the wrong spot. Okay. One of the questions that I had was, yeah, exactly that. Because I realized that the backside, there's a lot of fill. You know, you have that boulder wall, which it'd be nice since I, and part of what I've said is give me a little, give me some cross sections there. So you folks can see, okay, here's the weapon. Here's the slope, the buffer, here's the wall. This is the fill based on existing versus proposed conditions. I like to see the clearing limit a little better defined behind these buildings. You can kind of figure what, in one of the plans, they have some hatching is where seeding is going to happen. But I like to see the actual limit of disturbance because I'm looking at the, at that building and going, well, I see a, a 30 inch oak here. That's right at that limit. It's very, very tall. It's about 70 feet, 80 feet tall. And that's a danger to the building. So they, they, they're going to want to go a little further? How much room are they going to give themselves? So they, they don't have, they don't compromise the building with one of these microbursts coming through and cutting off a tree and landing it in the building. So a realistic edge of clearing would be, would be good. But maybe it's based on what's happening behind that particular two buildings, you know, the ones on the slope. So where's the fill coming from? I assume the pill is probably coming in part from the site. But that's a question for the engineer and I don't know if there were any cotton fills that were given. So anyhow.
To be fair, that is more of a planning zoning application.
It is. It is typically that you, right. I would agree, but there are exceptions. Especially when the majority of this fill is staring right down at the wetland, just a few feet away. So here will be a little more important to look at these cross sections. And I get a handle on how much fill, which kind of also gives you an idea of the duration that this is happening. And would that require maybe some phasing or not? All those things are, are questions that might need to be taken care of.
Do you also require the fill that was brought in to be black tested and T C Vs and all these things? That's a, that's a problem.
That is something that's required by your regulations.
But typically, just to try and address that now. Should this go to construction, that type of material specification will come up in the final planning and zoning approval and then we, where are you engineering at now? Get to look at that and see, say, the source of the pit is coming from whether or not, for instance, this retaining wall has adequate footings and foundations. Things are coming to our mind as part of the review process, but not so much the weapons review process. We, we kind of have lanes we have to stay in and different parts of these outlets.
So how does that concern move from here to there?
Always a good question. So like George just said, some of these things do cross borders. And so the question about what the material makeup of that fill is a valid one. And it is something for this commission to consider when deciding to approve or deny the application. So it's
Can be additional.
It can always be a condition of approval. Can say it has to be, say, a DOT form 819 specification for clean fill. You, you wouldn't, for instance, wanting to say, oh, it has to be cement fill. That would be tremendously expensive and unnecessary. But you could say it has to be, you know, a, one of the, the DOT requirements for say a common fill gradation. Something like, what would that be? Like in the M13?
Druffle fill, granule backfill.
Then what? Free draining. I mean, there's, there's a number of specs that we could, we could choose one. So whatever quality would have, whatever source or even as material would have to be that.
So which brings the reason that I kind of dragged it into this consideration. Apart from the fact that it's just staring down in the wetland, is what I mentioned earlier. That if the contributions to, from a groundwater source are minero trophic enough, which means there's a lot of manganese and calcium and, and other minerals in, that affects the the, the, basically the flora and fauna, flora first, fauna second, but then especially the seepage areas. So if you bring some fill that's drastically different and the water's passing through that, it's going to affect these wetlands. Now that's like far out here kind of thing, but it's something that always crosses my mind. So that's why one of the questions that I've asked and was brought up also by the public to know what the fill is, what the characteristics of the fill are. So if they're highly acidic, maybe that's not the best kind of.
DOT notes.
They don't like, oh, they're good. I would not, for instance, look favorably, we reconstituted construction debris. Like a parking lot was made from. Mark and I were talking about that earlier, so that's not something I want to say.
No reclaiming.
No reclaiming to it. Ideally, nothing with a high silica content. So although great septic fill, not good for this location. Wouldn't want to see all that fine mica out there.
Enough to chew on for today?
And you'll be, you're going to send your report to the town and then town is going to send it to us.
And also to the, to the
Very happy to show.
Thanks.
To be out.
Thank you. You're welcome.
He's got to get together with his engineer to get some questions answered. Anything to incorporate in the fourth?
Commissioner Pass, please share my hand raise.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alan. Commissioner Pass would like to address the position.
Please go ahead.
Thanks for coming back on board, George. Good to see you getting your eloquent display of your technical expertise. I'd like to just go back to your observation of the wood frogs. Other than the wood frogs as a wetland species, I've been following the deer population in this town, which is moving into my neighborhood, which is a suburb that's got side yards of five to 10 feet. And they're becoming accustomed to our area. When we build a development like this, our wetlands so close to the road and clear cut around it to build a road and implant development of buildings. I see a breakdown of the wildlife corridor, which is fragmentation of the wildlife moving from their habitat to another habitat to survive. The wood frog does not have that much of a area to move to, but deer and other wildlife do. And I'm really concerned about fragmentation for wildlife movement. And in a development of this size, which is I think around five acres, with about a half acre of wetland in between, surrounded by a road, which is basically caging in that area. The wildlife have nowhere to move. There's no corridor anymore. It's gone. So where do these animals go? They move on. And they just keep moving into the suburb of where we live, which is not really the best place for them to survive. Obviously, they're eating the host in my yard.
Mine too.
Which, you know, I'm not against, except in the wetland area, there's plants that they naturally eat. They also go there to drink water. Be it as may, there's more going, you know, going to be possibly more storms collecting water as John Bishan referred to, and I also agree with that. But we're breaking down the corridor, we're fragmented their habitat. That's the main concern of this design of this development. There's nowhere there for them to move around. They're caged in. That's what I'm speaking to. So I have a major concern about that. And I don't know how we can work around providing a corridor with a loop road. Unless there's an area for them to move around, move out. Do you have any suggestions?
Well, you, you bring a an age old issue that we have when we're looking at wetland applications, which do not specifically address wildlife. You folks do not regulate wildlife directly, but you do regulate them indirectly. If you can show that the habitat destruction is going to have an impact on or the change. So fragmentation, obviously, if I put my wildlife hat, my wildlife biologist hat on, is a big issue all around. It can be a local issue. It can be, you know, a landscape issue, obviously. It's probably not as much a landscape issue here because there's plenty of fragmentation all around. But it's probably more of a local issue. So the question is, are there denizens of the woodland above that come down the slope and use this wetland for part of their life cycle? And the answer is probably yes. You notice that it's, it is, it is a water resource. It's a water source for them. There's vegetation. And then you brought something that's sort of interesting in the fact that you're right when you when you surround a weapon, say, and not talking just directly about the fragmentation issue, but you talked about deer and deer population being attracted to the site, which they would be if they're around because they have a lot of more sources of palatable things. And then maybe they even go into the wetland. If they run out of hazardous to eat. And then they start changing the vegetation structure of the wetland and that has a cascade effect on the ecology of the wetland and its function and value. Oof. So that's, that's a a big issue that we're, we're facing as, as managers, land use managers. And we, we have some, we have some solutions, but they're probably not comprehensive because of the fact that the weapons regulations are what they are. And we have to look at physical impacts and not wildlife. But I will put my wildlife hat on and answer some of those in more hopefully cogent ways and maybe even make some recommendations regarding wildlife. And then it will be up to the commission to to look at those recommendations and do something about them.
I will appreciate your input very much. Thank you, George.
This commission doesn't protect wildlife?
Not directly. And this is
Part of protecting the wetlands for the wildlife. It's written right here.
Correct. But, but the problem is that the court cases have shown that they, they don't regulate wildlife. And it doesn't matter what that says, which is a big contradiction. I agree with you, but that's what the courts. Absolutely. But that, that was written in the beginning and those regulations have been amended without doing anything with the preamble, which, which you're looking at.
Right on here. There's nothing that ends this. Also, wildlife is part of that. So
It's part of it.
Because I think that gentleman has a very valid opinion. I just am confused why, why it's not a part of this.
Correct. So let me, let me tell you something. In my career of 37 years or so, I've been a part of three, possibly four major court cases that went to the Supreme Court of the United, of the, of the state. Then made legislations and drove some of those amendments that you are looking there. One of them was the Avalon Bay versus Conservation Commission, Weldon Conservation Commission. The other one was the glorious preserve case that was done in Old Saybrook, which resulted in about 1,000 acres of of habitat be protected. And that kind of made some law. And basically what, what the, the cases. Said is that the only thing that the wetlands commissions regulate are physical. So if you, if you can show physical impacts. Whether direct or indirect, short term or long term to, to the wetland habitat. Then those can be considered. And, and wildlife unfortunately were. Ignored. And the cases that I'm talking to had to do with wildlife. Uh, the one in Avalon versus.
The act as a whole, the intent to protect wildlife is second, secondary to protective zones, but it's still in.
So they protect wildlife, but protecting the habitat. That's how wildlife has been protected.
But it's still a part of the commission.
It is, it is. But, but the way to get there is through physical impacts.
Right. I just.
Yeah.
It was, you were alluding to is it's not the charge of the commission to worry about this wildlife impact. And that's incorrect.
No, that's, that's what I was not trying to say. I was trying this, they can't, you know, so for instance, if there was a particular species. Uh, there was a wetland dependent or, um, species that was, like we talked about the vernal pools. You know, if there were some spot of salamanders in there and what we were doing was getting rid of the salamanders. Well, you don't regulate the salamanders and that's Avalon Bay versus Conservation Wilson Commission and also the, the other one. But what you do is you regulate the habitat. So if you can show that you have impacts to, to the habitat, that's going to. Have an impact on wildlife, that, that's how you back, backdoor it, if you will. Or. From the preserve case. If you can show that the elimination of the entire wood, or wood frog population from a vernal pool has. Because as a keystone species, has the effect of changing the chemistry of the wetland, which it will. Then you backdoor it that way too. So that preserve case allowed that to happen. And then there's the Unistar case and I won't go on for there. Um, anyway, so there you have it.
Um, Commissioner Paskett, which, uh, still have, still here, I'd like to ask you another portion of this, George.
Sure.
The clear cutting that's going to be done to provide room for the road. And some of these apartments. We talked about this at the last meeting.
Yep.
Regarding a thermal impact to the wetland. Which will be consider considerably large. I'm concerned about the often review area being diminished. To the point where it's very close to the, as you said, like fifteen feet or even less in some portions of the delineated wetland. I feel that road is going to be too close to the wetland to keep it. A functional wetland. That's another major concern. It's, it's not inadequate development to protect the wetland. And I think that needs to be addressed in a design. Reconfigured.
And I'm, I'm looking at all that also because I remember a conversation we had last time. About thermal impacts. And I did tell you that, um, I always look at making sure that there. Adequate buffers to the wetland because wetlands are protected by their buffers, believe it or not. Um, and every case is different. So you have to look at it on a case by case basis. And sometimes smaller buffer is okay. And sometimes it's not. But that's going to be the subject of my, hopefully my final review. On one of the subjects.
I look forward to it. That's all I have for now, George. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I look forward to reading your full report.
I'm sorry?
I'm, I look forward to reading.
Okay.
Thank you. This one just, um, this is good, but it's, it's almost more questions and answers. Just because, you know, it is.
Part of the process. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Third time's the charm.
I was, uh, just trying to say, uh, Patrick Snoggin for kids things that, uh, we've taken notes and we will get all the information. Uh, George has looked and requested here this evening by like the twenty fifth of the month. So should give him a week and enough time to reply. Um, so I've spoken to the, uh, soil scientist and also to my engineer for some of the reports that he's requested. And we'll go through that report. So that's all, all I was trying to say to interrupt. If that's all, um.
Interesting Ian, just out of my curiosity. Was he able to address us tonight and did not? Or is there something wrong with his connection?
He didn't hear. He had left and then when we were asking for him, he came back.
And I asked that because I'm kind of doing one of these zoom stuff and I really want to make sure we don't. Have any problems with this process due to my inability to run zoom games.
Uh, I'll, I'll ask you to file a formal complaint if that's the case. But I think he said he was all set.
Great. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any more questions from the committee? Any more questions from the public? Since it's time for you to make a motion to either close the public hearing, continue the public hearing.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Gentlemen, I just want to make a statement that if you close the public hearing tonight. Then any further conversation with George's report. Would not be within the public hearing. So my recommendation is to continue the public hearings next month. So if the.
What I meant to say was that we continue the public hearing until next month. Sorry about that. I misspoke.
It's his fault.
I mean.
So it needs, so just for, for my notes, uh, David, are you making that motion?
I am making that motion.
And we have a second.
That's second.
Second, Alan Paskett.
Thank you. Do you want to, um. I think the next step is to call the.
Can I, can I just, can, can I just confirm we're voting on leaving it open, correct?
Yes, we're voting on leaving it open.
Typically, I think the term is we are voting to continue the public hearing to the November nineteenth. Regular meeting of this commission.
Okay.
There is a sample motion in your, uh, in my handout from tonight. Should I read it for you?
Oh, this one. Yeah. Should I read that out loud?
That would be best.
All right. So a motion to continue the public hearing. Is because the, the post activity will have significant impact on the regulated area and it's. That's wrong.
So the, the motion to continue the public hearing for application. IW dash twenty four dash thirteen to the next regular meeting on November nineteenth, two thousand twenty four. On page two. Do not get page two.
Didn't get this.
All right. So that you can definitely blame me for it. So that's, that's, that's the recommended motion. That you're making and Alan is seconding.
Right.
We all agree.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So I believe that is an adequate vote to continue this public hearing to next month. If anybody objects to this procedure, speak now. Okay, so. Your public hearing is continued to November nineteenth meeting. Seven o'clock. Thank you, George. Thank you, members of the public. And I believe it is time for.
No. Was, was. What a funny thing because it actually had a neighbor with the same name.
Oh, yeah. Ellis is probably coming. I was in general, his brother. Thank you, thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you guys for being here.
Yes. So next item on the agenda is new business.
We have no new business.
Uh, it's public participation on non-agenda items.
Yeah, correct. That's correct. Public participation is next.
You're right. I missed that. Anxious to go home, I suppose.
We have no members of the public online though, right?
We, we do have two attendees. Do not see either of their hands raised.
Take two. She can't eat them. They're good for you. I could listen to you a lot. That was very interesting.
Me too. It was great. Uh, so identify public participation on non-agenda items. Is there any member of the public who would like to address the commission regarding this? I see no members of the public in person and I do not see hands raised from the attendees. I'm a little shy on the product procedure here. Do we need to have a motion to close public participation? I believe that would be.
Let's have them.
No.
You don't need to.
Yeah. Okay. So that does bring us now to new businesses, which we also have done. Now, just. I'm going to make a statement regarding this in staff report because we wanted to put something in new business and it didn't make it into the agenda. All right. So that's, uh, that would be continued, uh, which brings us to old business and old business is JR. And JR's engineer made a presentation to this commission last month regarding two eighty Hartford Avenue. And this is. That was his application being received at that meeting and he made a presentation.
Right.
And so this is your opportunity to, uh. Either vote on his application or to set a public hearing or.
Right, exactly.
Question him further.
I don't see that we need a public hearing for this because it's just a modification to a parking lot and it's actually pretty minor. So I'm of a mind to say that we should just vote to approve. It's, he's, he's adding an extra drain to parking lot. Essentially it. Am I correct? If you, you know, and I don't see that as being, and he's going to tie the drain into. MTC strain or?
On the, underground baffling. Uh, first off, I'm Norman Oliveretti, Jr., known as Gerald Oliveretti. I'm the owner of Newington Property Group for the record. Um, but we're installing underground. Uh, filtration system and oil separator, um, to help retain the water that's now puddling in the parking lot and, and so forth.
I drove by and looked at the topology and.
Yeah.
You know, just as a casual observer, it doesn't look like it would affect the wetlands.
No, it's actually a big improvement. We've actually, by doing the survey work. Increased the amount of wetlands that the town wasn't aware of, and we weren't aware of existed. Um, if we didn't do that, we wouldn't even be slightly into the upland review area for some of those drainage just being installed. Right now there's no storm sewage at all and the roads with, for hundreds and hundreds of feet. So all the road even. Comes into this parking lot. So, um, this is.
To be on slightly higher ground than the parking lot.
Yes, it is. Exactly.
So I would possibly make a motion that we approve your application. And second, and does anyone want to second that?
There is a, a draft motion also.
Uh, cut, point of order. You do a vote on not having the public hearing first. Then we go and voting on the application, sir.
See.
Okay.
He's keeping us out of trouble.
Thank God. Really, I really appreciate it. I wish he was down. Instead of being up there and.
So there is also a sample motion, uh, that this activity does not have a significant impact. So if you'd like to use that.
Is that like on page two also?
Page one.
Is it also on page two?
It's on page one.
The bottom.
What are you guys looking at?
Well, no, I don't see the, I don't see the motion to, to, uh, to stop the public hearing, but I see the.
There's a, a motion just below the middle of the page for no public hearing. This is application twenty four dash fifteen. On the first page.
Anyway, I'd like to make a motion that we, you don't need a public hearing for, for his application. Does anybody want to second that?
Second.
Okay. And we're voting on that? Yeah, should we?
We vote. You can move that to a vote.
Okay, we're going to vote on that. I'm trying to say, uh, he doesn't need public. It's a rather minor change. In fact, it's a favorable change.
Who seconded?
Uh, either one of us, the main.
Take a, take a name. We did it at the same time.
And did, did we hold a vote?
I'd like to call a vote on that motion.
Aye. John, you there?
John? You lost John.
We didn't lose John. He, he dropped off.
Aye.
Well, we can, okay.
So it's a unanimous.
No, no. Participation. And.
Aye. Very good.
I'd also like to make a motion now to approve his application as it stands.
And then you could read that one. Yeah. That's.
To approve the application IW twenty four dash fifteen. To reconstruct an existing parking area, constructing a new drive access in from Hartford Avenue. And constructing a subsurface stormwater detention system within the upland review area at two eighty Hartford Avenue. The applicant contacted is JR Liberti. The owner is the Newington Property Group LLC.
With the standard conditions.
With this, with the ten standard conditions applying. You don't want me to read those two? We're not, we're not reading those anymore, right?
We gave up. We're not, we do not have to. We got, um, an opinion on that.
Okay.
Just refer to the ten, ten, ten standard commit, uh, conditions from section eleven dash one of the regulations. And do we have a second?
Second.
The discussion, has the applicant reviewed those ten standards? Conditions. And concurred.
Joe, did I give you a copy of those?
I, 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 I may, I don't think I've gotten them personally, but I'm sure our engineers.
Oh, I can fix that.
Okay.
I got pictures. Thank you.
Do you agree to that?
Yes, I'm sure there's. Yes, I agree.
The record reflects that he agrees to the ten standard conditions. Do we have any other discussion on the motion?
Can we, do you want to call the roll or just have a voice call?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We have any objections? Any abstentions? Your motion is granted.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for the time.
Thanks for enduring all that.
I hope you enjoyed George's presentation.
Hey, you learned something. Did you get a cookie?
About fifteen pounds in six weeks.
Okay.
So is anybody going to speak to us about this invasive control, uh, species control plan for five fifty?
I'm sorry, David, what?
You know, the invasive control plan. For five fifty Cedar Street.
Yes, I'm going to speak to that and, yeah, communications.
Okay.
So I'm a little confused. Commissioner, uh, Sodell can probably straighten me out on that. We have also an old business, the. Public hearing, however, we continue that. So I don't believe.
That is table based on the public hearing. So we'll just pass on that. Wait till our next meeting to read.
Thank you. And this brings us to item eight, the other public participation on non-agenda items. I am down to one remote attendee who does not have a hand raised.
That's probably Jeff Zalek, by the way.
And no members of the public.
That's probably Jeff Zalek, by the way.
Uh, he, he only shows up as guests. So.
Okay.
Uh, I wouldn't be surprised.
No, I wouldn't be surprised.
So with that in mind, we're now into communications and reports and agent communications. So that. Doing a wonderful job of losing my notes tonight.
Got anyone?
No, I have a, um. This is one of those days. This is one of those days. There's something about coming back to the office after a long weekend where you spend almost the whole day on the phone. Oh, here we go. Holding up my laptop. All right. First off, under category of maintenance activity, Park and Recreation Crew is replacing an old steel shade structure at the back of the existing pool at Mill Pond Park with a new steel pole frame off roof shade structure in the same place and footprint. So I bring it to your attention because it is in the park and it is in an upland review area, but it has no impact to the ground. It's a.
Straight replacement.
Straight replacement of a slightly different type of structure. So that was, uh, that was, again, for your information more than anything else. It is an agent approval for one oh five Goldwood. Application IW twenty-four dash eighteen, permit to document an unpermitted pool and a shed. This is a, best described as unintended consequence. The homeowner came in to take out a permit to replace his shed. It had gotten rotten and he wanted to put in a new one in. And in the process of doing the zoning review, they discovered that he also had a swimming pool, neither of which had permits. Apparently, the pool contractor, six or seven years ago, found out he had to do an application to this commission for the working up one review area and decided it was easier not to do any permits. So the poor gentleman in question finds this out and to document the pool and the shed being in the up one review area, we made him do an application and we did an agent approval for the existing items, so he could get his pool, his shed repost. So this is one of those, how do you not punish somebody for trying to do the right thing? So we just administratively approved it. Another agent approval, this I brought to your attention last month is the modification of permit twenty twenty-three dash oh one AA one oh nine Brookside Road for the MDC. This is the pump station on Brookside that they were doing work on. And the difference is, last month they hadn't paid the fee, this month the check cleared, so we've put that to bed. Attached correspondence is the basic species management plan for five fifty Cedar Street. Cedar Point or Dakota Partners, depending on how you want to call that. That's the project Cedar Street where the old Buick dealership was. So that project has been substantially completed for a while, but they did not have electric power. Apparently, electric transformers are fairly rare. So it took a year to get a transformer to power the property. And they are now at the point where they're ready to come for their CO because they're going to have their power installed and get their final inspections done. And part of the Conservation Commission approval for that project was this invasive species management plan. I had a chance to look at it. It looks to me like it's in order, but I will qualify that that's not my general area of expertise. So that was included in your packets for this meeting. I don't know that it requires any activities or action on the part of this commission. It's more of a eye-dawning, deep-finding exercise from previous approval. And then we have, and also attached correspondence is a notice regarding eighty-three Main Street or Bridge Apartments. This is a longstanding issue where that apartment at one time had a pedestrian bridge that connected the apartments up on the hill to the rest of its property down on the flat. And that bridge has long since collapsed. The steel superstructure of that is twisted and lying partly in the brook. And it is now collecting debris falling trees and things of that nature. This issue dates back many years, probably in the neighborhood of six to eight. And we are now trying to follow up with the property owner and the DEP. This first came to my attention last year. We do an annual walk of flood control properties that are jointly supervised by DEP and the Natural Resource Conservation Service out of town. This is a federal agency. They have a Connecticut office in town. And so every fall, and in fact, very shortly, our next meeting is coming up, we walk that area of Piper Brook that goes up into West Hartford and crosses Main Street and comes into this property, which is where I first saw it. And that brought the question around as to why is this still here? And the very long story short is that they at one point had a contractor in place, but they couldn't agree on a price, and so the contractor walked away. The work didn't get done, and it stayed like that until last year when it got out of my radar. And so that's where we are moving forward with that. The property manager unfortunately is out of the country for the month of October. Visiting family having to do with holiday or something at that time of year. And he will be back at the end of the month, and we will go visit the site together and go from there. Any progress that comes from this, I will report to you. As a matter of this being an impediment to floodwaters in that area. And it is, it's, it's a problem of concern. I would have gone in there myself last year and done it, meaning with a contractor, not my physical self. Except that we never really got the ground hard enough to bring a piece of machinery in there. Hoping this winter it does get cold enough that the ground freezes hard enough to bring a machine in that will be able to remove these steel beams. Otherwise, you'd have to crane it from the top, and there's not a lot of room to bring a crane in on the apartments. It's just a tough spot to get to. But I do think we'll get this cleared up in the foreseeable future. We get like that because I'd hate to put a timeline on this. It has been at it for a while. And so if anybody happens to be up in the neighborhood and sees this area, you, you can't see it from the road. The tree cover is too heavy, but it is, it is concerning enough to me that we started shaking some trees, so to speak, getting some action. And I believe that's all I've got for agent communications. Anybody have questions for me? And that brings us to you, fine ladies.
We have nothing new to report since last month's meeting.
And, and you came just to see George?
Absolutely.
And on life, education and research?
Yes, Commissioner Pascal is here. Um, as you know, I've been tracking and monitoring the Mill Pond exclusively because I live close to it and also I frequent the park. Regarding the film that I had seen several times coming from the Mill Brook into the pond seems to have excited. I had not seen the film visiting in the last few weeks. There has been a diminishing level in the pond of water based on dryness of the weather and such, which may be a contributing factor from further up Mill Creek. I'm not quite sure, but at this point I don't see any film. Moving further, where I was walking around the edges of the pond, and now that they've been cleared even more on the, on the ridge side, I've noticed this green cast in the water in the middle of pond extending to the edges of the pond. And it appears there is a, a growth, which appears to be what I would call algae bloom. So I looked up the science of algae bloom. And it's due to a high nitrate and phosphate level. So what causes a high nitrate and phosphate level? Well, there's certain things that could occur over time to a pond, which is the buildup of organic debris. Basically, leaves falling into the pond over time from the surrounding vegetation and the trees, which is a, has been considerable because the pine hasn't been cleaned in, in a long time. Nor has it been dredged. So what occurs is the leaves and the grass clippings from mowing also. The wind pushes it in. Um, you know, rills of water from the slopes going down into the pond accumulate and it accumulates in the bottom of the pond. And then organic debris turns what we call muck. Well, it's also becomes a sludge. And that sludge and muck breaks down into this algae boom. What also can contribute to it, I don't know how many people here are aware of goldfish in this pond, which have been accumulating over the last few decades. These goldfish are huge. They're actually called koi, K-O-I. Believe it or not, a half a dozen of these large goldfish can produce enough excrement to break down into nitrates that the algae thrive on. And in the section of science journals I looked at, if these goldfish continue to multiply, this algae boom will continue along with the breakdown of the leaves and grass clippings that move down to the pond over time into the base of the pond. So how do we remediate this? Take out the goldfish for one. Clean out the muck and sludge at the bottom of the pond. And or add a sludge and muck reducer. So take your picker and all and attack it. So I'd like to have the town engineer or, and or the Parks Department, Parks and Grounds Department, look into remediating this problem. I think it's an algae boom. I'm not a scientist. I didn't take samples of this material in the water. But it, by my observation, sure looks at it. So I feel that we should have someone come in that's of experienced background to look at this. While this is going to continue. So I'd like to have the town engineer, who's the wetland agent. If you would, please follow up on this.
I think that's a great idea. Can we do that?
Oh, we can certainly ask a few questions.
Like, there shouldn't be koi, koi living in those ponds. They're not native.
Really have a the answer to whether or not we consider koi in the pond.
They're not native. People threw them in there.
Again, I don't have an answer.
They don't grow in Connecticut. This is not a Connecticut fish.
I'm going to have to go back to the council for policy direction.
Okay.
All right, then, move the floor.
To respond to this, we will, I will have a conversation with Recreation Parks and see if they have any background on this, and if they have any correspondence with the Parks Board regarding the pond, and I will report back to you with that.
So, sounds good. Thank you.
Do we have any further business?
I don't believe we do.
We have a motion from somebody to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I would like to second it. Okay.
Yeah.
You're all in favor of adjourning this meeting?
Aye.
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 No objections, no extensions? We are adjourned.
Supposed to shut that thing off, leave it on.
Thank you, everybody. And David, thank you for the cookie. That's it for us?
At least I could do.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, sir.
Take some cookies.